Your shop.
Hello.
I was just telling them I found out a hard way through camping. We use your back hatch too often. They didn't have coolers and everything. Batteries just go dead very quickly. I would have to figure out this trick for the carabiner up and to trick it to drink into this last. I get one in the mail. Welcome. You guys get those in your home.
Are you excited now?
I'll do this.
Do you mind if I line Carl?
No.
You don't mind what I said she had to tell us.
Yeah, he was coming.
Morning. How are you? You doing well?
I put one out here at last. Is it? I would recommend that. Cause I never did get comfortable.
The one. A size they want. And then off. Get nothing. Yeah. That's actually good. Something fall kind of down. Take that.
Hey. Yeah.
We can next week.
No meeting next week. Next week, one of the days where we don't everything on the agenda. Oh. Yep. That's something comes up.
It's been when you get out meetings for the sake of just having meetings.
But. Everybody's stopping work. Yeah, but even if we meet for half hours, about two hours of time of discussion for everybody that was in court hours. Online.
Or.
Yeah. All right.
On weekend. It was a long short weekend.
I know.
For a short, long weekend.
Running that. Out of town company with. Eighteen month old and a three year old. Yeah.
This is my job. He's really.
Second during burning hot.
Yeah. Fuck the money for the. We want to find out the power. Yeah.
Yes. Well, your level, yes.
It's getting. Bringing smaller down.
The basis station on open meetings, public records, she's gonna be online.
Really didn't have one. I mean, I gotta be here personally much slept all weekend. We can learn about this morning.
Was it costing you?
They are. They look at our financials specifically related really running DHS office. And so we send that their report to the state. Get reimbursement from the state. Guaranteed that the reimbursement we get while the people are exceed their fee for doing that. Or so usually we get more. But. Yeah, we do the report annually to get it. So it makes me money. Yeah, that's right.
It's a new industry. Well, it's nine thirty, all those in so choose.
New years, but we.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the meeting's ordered with everyone present as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. If it is not to be recorded, we have the option of leaving. First item on the agenda this morning is the road department with some updates.
Hi.
You drew this for all this.
That's right. Mike Wise with the engineering department. Yeah, the engineer, Michael Thune is. Gone for the week on vacation with his family.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. I hope he's having fun too, so take a good week. Um, oh yeah, I'm going in, so you can start reading through the list and if you have any questions. Please ask.
Hey, next week are the DOT clear change.
No, I we haven't. I don't know if we've got it quite set yet. They're working on their schedule and they've been pretty busy, so they're trying to coordinate. But they have been emailing back and forth. Yeah, we're still working on Nesty and hopefully in between the rains, we're we're making progress, so.
Any any idea of a completion date on that?
No. No, we'll leave that. Well, it's been pretty wet, so yeah. And that's kind of the same. We got W twenty, our culverts. That was a pretty wet week last week, too. We did get another one completed and got the road open. And then they're back up there today digging, so. And we're hoping, you know, in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to kind of wrap that project up for this year as far as the pipelines.
B thirty two patching, when will that take place?
Um, we just, and I can show you the prices here. These are the quotes we got. We just. We're coordinating that River City, they were a little bit. So we had two bids on that project. And that'll be in coordination with the the pave outs and the shoulder paving that's down there at the intersections too. That was put into this as well. So that's why it's probably a little higher than our typical patching because we have all that work around two twenty seventh avenue and stuff. And there, I think their plant's set up in Hawkeye right now in Fayette County. They're doing some work down there, so we're hoping we can get them up here fairly soon. And last week, Aztec, who got the chip seal bid, they stopped down last week and they grabbed some rock samples out of Skyline for the rock we have. So they're running those gradations on it now just to make sure everything's fine with them and so forth, so. So they're kind of gearing up too, but we don't have a date from them yet either.
So we have to take action.
I know what hurt.
I motion to approve the bid. For River City paving seventy nine thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. Total is eighty two, nine eighty two.
Well, that's the higher bit. Higher.
That's either the company.
Now, we have a motion as second to accept River City City paving for the B thirty two wave patches. A further discussion. None of those in favor, is it right? Those holes same side. She carried her land this.
We did have good news last week on the bridge that's south of Jackson there on B sixty eight. We did the archaeological dig and we didn't come up with anything. Yep, decor was there and Bear Creek was there and so, yeah, our guys dug it and, yeah, there was nothing following.
Someone was impressed with the ability to just literally take a hinge.
Yeah.
They couldn't wave it.
Yep, yep, nope, that was Darren. He was very good in excavators. I'll pass that along, so. Yeah, no, they took their time, they dug it, they satisfied everyone, so Brennan's are still scheduled for coming in the end of this month.
Okay.
So hopefully we can get that project going and give it on track.
That's about three month deal probably.
Yeah, it'll be close, you know? And we'll start setting up the detours here pretty soon or at least getting the signs in the ground, so.
They get it done before the. Weather.
Yeah, yeah. We're always fighting whether it's either rain or snow, but yeah. Um, and then you might have saw Spillville's having a road closure today on the north end there, so we're still coordinating our Spillville project for next year with the water main that's happening this year.
I made arrangements with the middle for work around so. At the north end of town, they have to make a crossing from the west side of Main Street over to the east side to continue all the way down to the cities, the city hall. And so they had to make that one crossing in the whole project.
Yes. We'll go down there, we'll be closed for a little bit. I think that's Wednesday. Yeah, that's scheduled.
Baker's been doing a been moving along rapidly, they're doing well.
Yep, and they've been doing a good job of keeping us informed and as I mentioned, we're gonna try to get our part of that project done next year then, so. And we've been working on at the end of the year, we've been working on next year's projects and we got a couple right now that are still looking for NIPA clearance. That seems to be holding them up a little bit, but we're still contacting them every so often to make sure they're moving or trying to move. And then, yeah, the Franco projects are getting set up for next year too, so.
Anyone have anything else?
It's big, good, yeah, so fair this week, so.
It's pretty close. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Consent agenda?
Got the minutes, the claims and the records, most papers for file.
I need to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed.
That alliance bill, I think I heard you saying the energy usage, we break it out on a percentage for HHS.
Yep, yep, we break down all of the building wide bills for HHS based on square footage and we do their their exact space plus a percentage of the common space that's their ratio of all the space, so. It looks like they have thirty five percent of the space, so they get thirty five percent of their common space as well as anything, the amount of their square footage.
Twenty three percent.
Okay, well, their space might be twenty nine, but once you add in the share of the common space, it goes up to the mid.
No, it would be the twenty.
Oh, that's funny.
The twenty nine point eight.
Yeah, we had to. I had to send them the floor plan and the calculations and they had to approve it for me.
Cause we're gonna put it at thirty, but.
Yeah, that's right, they didn't want it. Yeah.
Maybe we should have gone to the centerline or wall.
Yes. So those bills get sent DHS, they send them into the state, the state pays a share based on our cost report, which is what Steve was asking earlier about to. They call you asked cost advisory services. Yeah, they do a cost report for us that helps bring down those costs. We file that with the state and they pay a share and then whatever's left that they don't pay, we bill to ten percent to the other counties and then we get the rest. Works out to be that probably fifty to sixty percent of the expenses get reimbursed through the other counties or the state.
We're paying the blunt of it.
Yeah.
For, yeah. Because theirs in this page here then is that taken off?
That's all the expenses at that building. Right, but they've only been in there a short time.
Time, so you can't really assess what.
All right, it's nine forty. Couple miscellaneous items next on the agenda, first of which is action on workforce development reorganization. The claim sheet, go get someone.
Thank you everyone saw the the handouts that were provided by Northeast Iowa. A number of the counties have already gone ahead and approved, including Clayton and our local six. And I haven't heard any more this week, most will be hearing it today. The there's a meeting coming up on the eighteenth that which they need a hundred percent of our twenty counties participating. The the key. This is probably a good summary, it'll be that I just received from the area director. No, from Mason City for our our northeast Iowa. So it is. The a merger would centralize some administrative functions allowing for shared staffing, combined monitoring and more streamlined board governance. Reducing duplicated efforts would allow contract consolidation for the OSO fiscal agent, lowering the administrative costs, which is where we need the most impact on our funding. Where they see the cuts coming the most. Emerge area would allow greater alignment of labor market strategies, workforce initiatives and business engagement across a broader economic region. We would see improved service delivery and resource pooling. A larger region means higher population and economic footprint, making us more competitive for discretionary Department of Labor grants. Which we would then in turn brave more funding streams together and serve more people. Allow us to standardize WIOA policies, reporting system and monitoring practices and service provider expectations across a larger area within twenty. With twenty counties, we're already balancing rural urban needs. Emerge structure must preserve local input and service delivery flexibility. If you need anything, just let me know. So that was the last communication from Taylor Williams. So I think the overall proposal is the right is the right thing. We we don't really wouldn't be. It wouldn't benefit us to try to completely drop out of the whole picture. Then we'd lose aspect. I don't.
And we won't lose.
We will. Just that we know, we will not lose our local office right down the street on Washington Avenue. So the overall, the overall thing I think is a good is a good move for us and I think the regions will come together, that'll give us a better leverage point also against the large urban area, which is, you know, basically Devlin itself is a is a region unto itself. The entire western side of the of the state because it's so spartan, much less partially sparsely populated and bigger geographic layer and they've merged all of that into one already. So we're basically going to cover the other side and we have a better, we've got a better mix of people with with the river, the river directive, the riverside of it on our side and their population base. And that whole issue of getting a better footprint to be able to influence the Department of Labor.
So is anybody attending online that we know of from workforce to work, anybody invited to?
No, because well, they are, but they have almost all of the boards within our county or many are meeting on Mondays. So there's not that much staff. They can't come to a hall. So she's looking for a report from me, you know, as an email that she sent earlier.
Can you send that email to me? Over to?
Which one, one I just read?
Regional director for workforce.
But what I read you was from.
Yes, what you read us, can you copy, can you forward that to us, please?
And this one, the one you just handed out came with one that he forwarded.
I read through that. Um, but that's not the same thing as what.
No, that was the summary he just read him.
My biggest concern, of course, is for the Winshie County people to be able to get to a workforce development office. And that we're keeping Decora is really great. There'll be one in Decora. I've got to look at that map again to go see where the three in in Winshie County or in our region would be located.
Mason City, Mason City, you know.
Yeah.
So social security offices affiliated with Iowa workforce.
No, back there in. You never build it. Yeah, work Iowa workforce is the backside of.
Oh, yeah, where he goes.
Yeah, that's. That's where the all the computers stand. And all the rest of it is there for any workforce seekers.
Batima, can we let anybody online, just in case somebody's online from workforce development, be able to raise their hand and make any comments right now?
Yes.
I can't tell from here if anybody has their hand up or not.
So it's that a motion to proceed.
Second.
No, were you making?
Making, I'm making the motion proceed.
I'll second that.
Martin, second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to go ahead with first development reorganizations and further discussion. I know all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Supposed same sign.
I'm gonna just kind of stay announced while we do this further reports. But it passes for this.
Next though. Discuss community services, building rental rates and expense slash revenue numbers.
You asked me to put together those numbers. And revenues. So the revenues are on this page, the total rents is right here, fifty four, six hundred. That was for the free year, this completed fiscal year. And then all the expenses, Tony put this together. And he tried to put in some of those like one time things separately because because like your renovation and sidewalk expenses are things that are kind of one time things.
So it looks like we've got about a ten percent difference. So it looks like we've got about a ten percent difference in what we bring in and what it costs us if you take the sidewalk out and the renovation, one-term renovation out. I'm looking at.
You gotta put uh insurance, building insurance should be on, could be on there too. Probably twenty-five hundred, three grand.
Yeah, we'll end up with some more sidewalk replacement. I know on the, on the uh, side with the entrance of DHS is using that parking area is in pretty, pretty bad shape. That's, I think John Halverson, they already talked about trying to key that into this fiscal year.
So if you add the insurance back into this, we're about the same as what it was to cost us per year for the old hospital. If you don't count any major renovations.
Then you gotta figure where we're at in uh, spot for public health.
No, and then add public health and the fact that they were in the old hospital for no rent, because we own the building.
But no, we are, that's what I mean. You gotta put that on here as a liability.
But you also have to take out the expenses out at the old HHS building too. You know, which we won't be burdened with once we find a buyer for that.
Well, we've already cut those expenses down to where we only have some minor holding costs.
Yeah.
But, and this, this is thirty thousand of one-time renovation expenses that are pretty, that are significant.
So the average cost per year, if you add insurance, you, how much are you saying the insurance is on that building? What'd you say? We should have that number in here, so we're looking at.
Yeah, I didn't, insurance is roughly like eleven hundred dollars per million, I think it's.
And you'll also get, like I was saying, you'll get some reimbursement from the state for DHS, which isn't in here yet, cause they just moved in.
Yeah.
One a month.
Um.
Just add a square footage there.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be paying. I don't know, I think it was probably around twenty thousand.
But then you gotta add more for electricity and gas and.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, it's, everything else is gonna go up, cause.
It's gonna go up a little, cause they weren't in there most of the year, so.
Janitorial will go up.
But if you take off the thirty thousand off there, you're, you're sixty-three and then your revenue is fifty-four, six.
Well, and if you take out thirty for one-time renovation expenses.
Yeah, yeah. Take that on, it drops in.
Just what's on here, um, it was a difference of, what was it?
Sixty-five, sixty-four.
Sixty-four. But then we're paying thirty thousand, almost forty thousand a year rent for public health down in public eye at the hospital. So that's gotta be figured, cause you can, you can move them into one space in here, like where toys go around, or if you could move them in there. And that would, I mean, that saves us another twenty, thirty-some thousand.
Just getting the carton of the horse to get on this one, cause we don't know what the Board of Health feels about that and whether or not that space would work, has that conversation.
I'm just saying, I'm just putting a scenario up there. You have to figure the cost down there of forty thousand we're spending. Have to.
Yeah, you, you basically do have to have that.
You gotta have that in there.
Yep.
Gotta figure that in there. So you gotta figure it, so we're what about half, we're getting half of what we shouldn't be. Rent down there.
And these numbers are kind of hard to look at, because there's a lot of transition going on between moving from one building to another and everything else and the one-time numbers. You know.
I mean, we can't be charging two dollars and eighty cents a square foot and be paying nine twenty-five a square foot. It's just common sense. We're here to do our best job for the county, our necessities that the county needs. May you start with infrastructure, business, safety, health.
Let's, from there. Let's uh, get the real numbers here for the next meeting, cause this isn't a complete list of the costs here. If you put insurance in.
Well, there's the only insurance, it'd be the only thing.
And I don't, I mean, I don't want, it'd be difficult to give what that exact number is, because our policy is the whole thing. I mean.
We're paying an additional twenty-two, nine per janitorial.
We'd be paying.
A lot more than that.
More than that elsewhere.
That's the, the person you hire.
He takes care of that building.
Yeah, a full-time person that would pay those.
Insurance.
Person that runs janitorial needs for the county, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
We have John Halverson.
Correct.
Paid full-time and benefits for janitorial services for the county.
Not just janitorial services, but.
Maintenance.
Building maintenance for all of our buildings. But we have, what we have there with a part-time person is uh advantageous to like, as, as accounting.
You pay no health insurance, no IFRS, no, like, no nothing, I mean.
It's a contract service.
Contract service, the cheapest thing you can do.
So what, are you guys angling to um make toys go around?
I never said that. I mean, I never, I'm not angry about that.
Who's, wait a minute.
But you just stated that if toys go around, it's not there, that public health could move into that space. Is that what you said?
That is a, there's been something.
I'm asking.
The hypothetical.
We just.
Deal I brought up. Yes, yes, I did.
So.
Could.
On that premise or that hypothetical that you brought up. Has the Board of Health or Department Head of Public Health looked at that space to even be talking about it at this?
I just brought it up as a scenario.
She's.
Brought it up as a scenario. Didn't say we were gonna do anything. I just brought it up as a scenario. We could possibly do it. That's all I said. And you're putting words in my mouth, not, no, I said hypothetically, we could possibly look at doing it.
That's why I said that you said.
We could possibly look at doing it.
I'm just repeating what you said. I'm not putting words in your mouth, Mark. So my question is, why are we having this discussion right now when we haven't even looked into it with the people that it matters to?
I just was bringing it up as a possibility is all. I'm not saying we're going to do anything. You are, not me.
Okay, women, I think this discussion was centered around the expenses of the building and our costs of the building in relationship to what we charge as rents. Is that correct?
Correct. And we bought this building, it was under the premise that we would not be kicking anybody out potentially. I'm not saying you're kicking people out. I'm not saying.
But we gotta look at what the state's putting down on us now. We got a lot more expenses coming on us that they're throwing at us. You know, two thousand bucks here, three thousand there, five there, well. So now we gotta look at where we're gonna, the necessities we need to provide to the county. And we gotta start at the top and go to the bottom.
And that was one question I was gonna ask Krista. Let's wait. Was the possibility of reducing the square footage that we rent? Did you hear that, Krista?
She's on ten, so we could have that discussion at ten.
Okay, just getting back to the area that we rent for you guys, uh, is there a possibility of reducing that space to try and get the rent down, so the per square footage reduces a little, if they're willing to go along with it? Okay.
Food pantry already has a increased schedule that will go into effect for July, so they're going.
They, they're paying their, I mean.
And they all, and they voluntarily raised their.
Yeah.
When we took it home.
They're, they're, they have a fifty dollars per year increase per month. Fifty dollars per month each year that goes in. So that's very similar.
I think.
One hundred.
I think they all, they automatically gave us an additional, about seven hundred a month to cover the increased electrical costs on that when they, we signed them.
No, it was two thousand. It was two thousand a month is what they were paying Spectrum and they, when they signed the lease with us, they agreed to a fifty dollars per month increase each year.
Nothing to do with electric bill.
Twenty fifty for this last fiscal year and starting now, it's twenty-one hundred a month.
Well, they, they basically verbally agreed to look at it, if the energy costs, sort, you know. They don't want to keep us locked into something where we're losing money. We don't want to lose that.
It amounts to a three percent increase per year is what it is. The six hundred dollars.
It's up there.
Yeah, rough nap point three, I guess.
Well, I think we need to have all of the stakeholders there at the table to talk about where they're at and their ability to pay more rent.
Food pantry there within our scope, I mean, they're doing their.
Yeah, but the other.
Electricity, the other, other two is, were, yeah. Cause we can't be paying nine twenty-five and charging two eighty-seven. And that's just not in four twenty. I mean, granted Spectrum, we got the building from them, but we still have to have a little yearly increase. I mean, it's just like everybody else.
Well, we would have.
It's going up.
Keep in mind that uh, uh, public health was to move in there, there'd probably be some renovation costs associated with it, with the concrete wall and everything. So that's definitely something you have to look at before, and anyone's making any decisions on it. Yeah, I mean, as a total, with this musical chair type thing, um, will be to the good when we get rid of the DHS building out there. So I mean, that's a huge thing, then. We're not replacing boilers and major repairs on the Smith building. As we worked for, so.
Yeah, we have no boilers down here. It's all furnace.
Yep, so that's.
Natural gas furnace.
Law was heard, this is much better.
Rent, rent increases are, are common. I noticed on our payables today that uh, we had a rent increase at uh, across the street from the county attorney on his space.
Yeah.
It's gone up over last, his rent has increased to us.
What's yet now?
Uh, two thousand bucks.
With nineteen something. All right, it's ten o'clock. Next item on the agenda, Kristen Banden, Public Health Director, with an update on outside entity providing public health services and mental space discussion. What do you have, Porus?
Uh, so we'll, we'll answer your space questions for, right?
Okay.
For that. So uh, I think it is good to have the discussion about space. Uh, I can appreciate uh the cost, right? It's, it, cause it is a pizza, right? And so there's obviously a lot of questions that need to be answered. Uh, we're currently storing probably, I can't figure out the square footage, but probably for sure two rooms, if not three, of county stockpile for emergency preparedness purposes. So that's equipment uh that really has to be in a controlled environment as far as not having rodents, not having um, you know, too high temperature extreme for just that county stockpile. So we need to have access to that. We did have a long-term care facility that had an issue. They didn't have their PPE and their personal protective equipment. Um, it was on order and they had an outbreak and they did the right thing by contacting emergency management and he knew that we were the ones that were the keeper of that and so asked us to pull A, B, C, X, Y, Z out. And so we were able to do that and they were able to pick that up. So having accessibility to that is hugely important. Um, so, so that would be one thing we want to consider. Uh, I, I know emergency management doesn't have space in which to store that equipment himself, where he is currently located. So um, we don't mind storing that. Um, there's some stuff that is still in transition. We're on a move from this room to that room, so that's truly all together. Um, so that it doesn't get mixed in with all the things that we have had to purchase over the years. So uh, there was no there were no funds exchanged for that stockpile. Those were things that Sean was able to reach out to whomever the powers were. Uh, of course, this was all during COVID times, so from really twenty-twenty moving forward. Um, and so yeah, it's been, it's been stored under our hatches for that time period. So again, we know what we're, uh, when we're asked, we know what kind of equipment that they're requesting and where that is, and so we're able to pull that out, so.
Is there, uh, that could be, doesn't have to be easily accessible, so to speak?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be stored like above the jail there.
No. I, I'm not gonna wanna carry that stuff downstairs. And um, so those things are heavy. There's cases of gowns, there's cases of masks, there's cases of all kinds of things. Those are the main things.
How often is it accessed?
It depends. Well, I mean, it's an outbreak, you know, I don't know.
Last five years, how many times do you access it?
Um, well, during COVID years, um, we were actually into it a couple of times a month, for sure. Um, and it's been a while, and so now we had this latest outbreak. So you just don't know, but that's the problem. And so, um, and we need to have access to it basically whenever. Typically, we're not going to have to go in there at three o'clock in the morning. I mean, Sean's not the type, I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't put words in his mouth. Um, Sean will call me at three o'clock in the morning now, just because, um, you know, Sean's not the type of person who's going to ask for the stuff at all hours of the night. Unless there's a true emergency going on, then we're all up at, you know, in the middle of the night, taking care of what needs to be taken care of. But usually that's gonna happen during daytime hours. So.
Apart from living room space in the whole jail on the main floor, could that be remodeled or repurposed?
Yeah, which is.
Not the kitchen, the one to the north of that, that's got a table in there, but there's also a table in the kitchen where people sit and eat one. I mean, could that be?
Uh, but there's a rest, there's a restroom access up on there?
Um, isn't it accesses from the hall, isn't it? I can't remember.
I can remember for sure.
Hey, I'm just wondering if there's more of the room where I have, I have some election stuff stored in there, but there's also other things in that room that could be moved.
And we have an engineer's office is storing uh, old, some old records in there that
Which could be going upstairs.
Could be destroyed or put upstairs.
So I would think we could probably find space.
For some of it.
For some of it, if not all of it, I don't know. And if, the boxes are that heavy, then they should probably be broken down into smaller boxes that somebody could carry easily. For emergency situations. Well, labels can be made.
I've not been in that space, so I don't know, but what it's like over there.
Lots of jail cells.
Well, yeah, I know, but that doesn't help me.
Be under lock and key.
We'll be, we'll be having more room over there because the, the historical society rents most of the upstairs in there. We're renovating the property up here, and so they're planning to take their stuff out. So we're gonna have that space. That's not, like you said, the upstairs isn't easily accessible, but maybe some of the things that are downstairs could go up there giving us downstairs space. I don't know. But that's not this month anyway. I mean, that's gonna be down the road a year or more, probably, but before they get everything out.
Actually, they're, they're contemplating sooner than that.
I would say by
Yeah.
middle of the fall, I expect they could.
Yeah, they're expecting to move out of there maybe as early as three or four months down the road from now.
Do you wanna schedule a time you can go see what's over there?
I think it'd be best to work with, and then probably find time.
Well, we need, probably need some input from Sean Snyder.
Yeah.
I think we're missing, uh, we're missing a piece of the equation.
That's the storage end of it. I mean, obviously you have other needs that is involved storage, so that's what you need to maybe we can bring up some of your storage space, that doesn't help your service provider space.
Right, right.
Now, do you store everything you have onsite over there or there are other places you have?
There is one other, we do have a mini storage unit uh, that has minimal things in there. However, uh, it's, one thing that doesn't fit anywhere else is a big pop-up drive-through tent. I shouldn't say pop-up, not pop-up. It's a set, setup tent. Uh, so it's big enough for a suburban to drive under. Uh, if we would need to go ahead and offer public services, that one. Um, our preview is, how big is it?
I mean, how big is it? It's collapsed, how big is it?
Well, it's gonna be at least ten, twelve. Well, it's gonna be at least ten, twelve feet, and then there's weights with it. But it is, it does not easily fit in the backwood pickup, it hangs out with it. Um, we've tried that, that's how they were delivering to us.
These services.
Is that the, uh, is that the storage that's in Cal- in Kalmer?
No, we don't have any storage in Kalmer.
You must, there were, we used to pay for storage. That went to, went to a Kalmer address.
No, ours is down back where behind where uh, Waxy Produce was.
And John Harverson rents one out at the, out by the recycling in North Church. For old desks and pile cabinets and chairs, things that. May be able to be repurposed versus disposed now.
It seems to me there are a couple of things we're trying to discuss right now, but. Communication for some reason is lacking, so what I wanna know is where you are right now. Square footage is, is it sufficient, if we were to find space for storage over here? Would that reduce your amount of square footage rented at the old hospital?
Uh, we would be able to reduce some rooms, yes.
Okay, so there's, that is a potential and you should look into.
That is a potential.
The second question I have is. When would you be able to go, it sounds like people think maybe you'd be able to fit into the community services building, is that an option? What does that look like as far as cost, and that's something that needs to be investigated yet.
Right, we want to take a look at cost, I'd also want to take a look at space. And, you know, there's things, again, we do, there would need to be the, some construction, you know that, um, for some of the different services and so. Um, you know, the different clinics that we offer. They're needed in this community, and so there's some confidentiality needs and so having walls that go to the ceiling, well. That that's important for us to be able to have that kind of thing, um, to be able to outdoors that. We can have those conversations behind closed doors if need be, that type of thing, so yes, there is, there's some capabilities there.
So is this a discussion, could you put it on the agenda for the Board of Health at your next meeting, so you guys can start that discussion?
We could have that discussion, um, again, we wanna take a look at the proposed space over at Community Services Building. Um, just to kind of envision it, measure it out, or so that we know, what does this look like, because we can already do some of that background work. On on our end at our agency to kind of figure some things out. And to be able to say, hey, what about construction here, what is, what's involved in that? Um, so that. Nobody's putting the cart in front of the horse here, so that we make sure that we're kind of doing this in a methodical manner. That would be nice.
I think that would be a great place to start.
About the, um, you know where the board is at with talking with the providers about.
So the Board of Health sets an advisory committee. Uh, and so they've had a meeting, um, some people were not able to attend, and so. I've been reaching out to them, trying to bring them up to speed and and make them aware of, hey, this is where the discussions are. Um, the comment, there's a couple of comments that keep coming back, one is what is the vision? And two, um, they're concerned about the tactics. So the tactics, they're 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 coming back saying, I don't understand why the board of supervisors is. Is wanting this, and so.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't, would you explain that a little further?
Yeah.
They are concerned about what?
The tactics of the board of supervisors.
I could, I thought you said taxes, and I would understand that.
Not the tactic, so they feel that there's some short-sightedness. Um, in the board of supervisors, and so again, I'm I'm trying to make sure that we have this full discussion with them. Um, letting them know really what you're asking, and then they're taking a look at some of the different services, so still very much in. In a questioning and inquiry status, um, trying to figure out kind of what are their next steps, how do they proceed? And so, you know, this is not something that we snap our fingers or wave a magic wand, no, that's in Aladdin and that's in Cinderella, it doesn't exist here, right? Uh, it just takes time, and and it's still process, of course, now that it's summer, they're having to deal with vacations and I'm trying to work around them. You know, so there's just, there's a lot of moving parts to all of this too.
Who is the executive committee?
The advisory.
Who is this advisory committee that they appointed?
Uh, they came up with five members, they're community-minded people, and so, um, that is for the Board of Health to be working with them. I'm hoping that there will at least be some kind of report to the Board of Health. Um, at their next meeting, but no guarantees on that one, but I want them to at least have some speakers say, hey, we've had these questions. Here's, here's what we want from the Board of Health now, so I don't know, again, these are moving parts.
Who are the members of the board of this executive committee, are any members of Board of Health on that committee?
No.
Our direction from the board was to direct, directing the Board of Health to pursue this. And to secure an RFP from these other entities. And we, how many months have we gone that already passed before anything is, seems to be initiated? Or contact with, by the Board of Health with any of these providers?
So the Board of Health actually said, you know what, we are working professionals as well. Let's help this advisory committee, that way it's separate, they can do the work, and they can come back with recommendations to the Board of Health. So they had that discussion, advisory committee used to happen years and years ago, and that's where policies, uh, were all. Come up and evaluated, basically, and so it really made sense for that to happen, there was discussion at the Board of Health meeting. May, at the May meeting, um, because there was, there was initial discussion at the April meeting and then further discussion at the May meeting. With that advisory committee to, and then they decided on the names.
Like the Board of Health was just pushing. Down the road their responsibilities.
Valid statement.
I don't understand. Why that would be a valid statement when they formed an advisory committee, things take time to do these things. So you've got an advisory committee put together and you're waiting for them to report back to the full board, and you're hoping that that may happen at the next meeting?
I'm hoping so, James.
I still don't know who's, who is the advisory committee?
Names you're looking for?
Yes.
And what purposeful is that for you, I'm just curious, I just wanna make sure.
I'm, I've, I proposed this motion and it was passed by this board. So that we would secure an option to see how we, with our budgetary responsibility. Were reacting for the public's good also. I understand your concerns, but I've yet to see in three or four months any apparent action with contacting. These other entities to have to initiate some response, I don't, we directed the Board of Health, it wasn't for you and your nurse to go and talk with. That I don't expect that to come out with a a very unbiased concern, we have other counties that are doing very well. And we don't get complaints, and they don't get complaints when we talk to other members within those communities. So I'm, I'm a little bit puzzled as to why, uh, it takes a long time, yes, but the wheels don't seem to be turning.
Some wheels turn very slowly, again, this advisory committee has questions that they want to figure out, what are the things that they need to be asking?
Well, who's they, this is a public meeting, who is they?
Members of the Board of Health determined, and so it's, um, Elizabeth Kane, it is. Amy Bruning, Dr. Wee. Benji Nichols and Carol Cowan.
Good, so it's in the public record.
They're all very public people.
That's fine, but these. We have good public meetings, just like the Board of Health is a public meeting that anyone can attend. Work sessions that we have are public meetings and people can attend. So I don't understand the secrecy as to why. This needs to be something that is done behind closed doors.
They want to make sure that they are coming up with the correct information, and if they're not being biased, right? They have to figure out where things are going. But the big question is, what's the vision, what's the vision for public health?
And are you waiting on that answer from the Board of Supervisors, what is our vision for public health, or who were you waiting for?
That's for a lot, so one of the things that we're also doing is strategic planning. So we are into our new grant year for a local public health services contract, and that is the deliverable that, uh, we now have to work on. And so that's part of the visioning, um. Once the Board of, one, once that advisory committee and the Board of Health and Board of Supervisors will eventually meet. Um, then there can be some further discussion about the vision, and maybe those are things that happen as far as creating that vision.
So you're expecting the advisory committee to have something for you for your August meeting?
I think so, yes.
Is this committee gonna meet with the other counties that are using the system?
I don't know, I don't know.
And making it work?
I would anticipate that they would, yes.
Supervisor Langrick, am I allowed to make a question?
Sure.
Thank you, my name is Lyra McKnight and I'm a community member. As we're talking about this conversation, I agree we need fiscal responsibility and I can appreciate. Supervisor Vic's question about the. Don't recall exactly the amount, but the two dollars approximately. There's a nine dollars approximate, uh, difference in that, um, I wonder. How the super, how the supervisory board can do that? I know when I'm looking for a place to live. I assess what my needs are, and then I make a list of all potential opportunities. Before I even try to make a decision on that, I look at all properties and I look. And what concerns me at the moment is it sounds like the board is throwing out some. Possible. Options without having the information necessary to do that. I also. Objected by Ken to the statement that public health is not. I apologize, I don't remember the exact wording, but it sounded to me as if. Public health was accused of not doing their share, and yet I heard public health saying. That they are paying rent for emergency equipment. That shouldn't be under their. Rent, that shouldn't be under their responsibility, and so it sounds to me as if public health is not. Only doing their job, but they're providing a service. To a different area of county service that they're not truly responsible for. So my question to you is to take. Those thoughts into consideration, and before there's any deep dive. Into the possibility of where public health might move. That the board look at putting together a fully complete.
Uh, let me explain one thing, that that, just to clarify something for you, the. EMS that is being spoken, Emergency Management Services is a separate entity, not a county entity.
Thank you for clarifying.
And they, they made, between public health and EMS, made an arrangement years ago to be able to keep these. Put this together to where they were acceptable, because they seemed to have a common use of sorts. And so for convenience, apparently, that was some of the reason I was, I don't know, and wasn't a part of those beginning statements, but. That's, that's why space is utilized at the Smith Building. And remember that we used to own the Smith Building as a county and decided that it was in the best interest of the county. To sell that building to Northeast Iowa Community Action, and so therefore we kept public health there. Public health space requirement has reduced over the years because we no longer provide certain services. And so we don't have the same re- space requirements that we previously had. So we have storage of the things that compound all of this, but that's part of the backstory to explain the EMS portion of it.
Thank you so much.
There may be some benefit from a budget perspective if, you know. Hopefully, we can find other places to store this cheaper, but if emergency man, if we continue to need to store emergency management things at public health. Space, they ran, and there may be some budget advantage to having emergency management pay the rent. Because their budget comes out of a different fund. Than Chris does.
Talk this on if you wanna ask.
Yeah, so, you know, if they have, if we still need some rooms there, if we can't find other places, that would be the best, is to find other places. But if that doesn't work out and we need to have Sean maybe pay a portion of the rent. It could come out his budget, which is separate from not in the general fund like public health, there may be some advantage considering that.
Sean, do you have any input on that?
Hey, good morning, everybody, uh, great conversation so far, uh, I think Steve did a good job of hitting the the nail on the head, you know. Uh, prior to the sale of the Smith Building, uh, public health's always been a great partner to emergency management and especially during COVID. When there was, uh, a lot of need for a lot of specialized different equipment, PPE and and other things. Uh, Krista was, you know, a great partner in in allowing me to, to clutter up her space with, uh. With goods for the county, um, those of you that have ever been down here at the law enforcement center, you know, I operate out of about eight by eights. Uh, uh, office down here, that's, that's all I have for storage, so. I have to get creative with where I, where I place things, I'm sure Krista and I can go through, uh, that stuff, you know, look for outdates, look for what's needed, look for what's been used. I'm sure we can, we can clean that up to, you know, to meet the county's needs with whatever, uh, uh. You know, common goals we can share, as far as the the paying, you know, um. The Emergency Management Commission, as I've tried to stress to you guys, is always, uh, looking for ways to to better our our partnership, uh, with the county, so. If there's something that would better the county and allow, allow it to be run through my department, I I I'm sure, uh, we can. We can work that out, Ben's always been good answering my ten thousand questions I have every budget year, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
So, just to be continued.
To be continued, yeah, it's a process. And, you know, any, doing anything right, um, sometimes takes a lot of time, and something this big certainly takes time.
Oh, I think the community's, um, anxiety over this has been heightened because of all the talk. They're afraid of losing services.
Correct, and that's the first thing, we need to make sure we're providing the services for this community, that's our job too.
In safety, health, quality of life, um, but it. It is also a responsibility supervisors to be physically responsible, so I do think this is a good discussion and. We can start looking at space in jail for some of that storage, that'd be great, and if that reduces your square footage down at the Smith Building, reduces the rent there. Wonderful, right, right, and then, and then add to that, eventually maybe looking at space of help at the. Community Services Building, but there's a lot that needs to be discussed first by the Board of Health and by.
There's another party though. That has to agree with the lowering of the rent at the Smith Building. Northeast Iowa Community.
Well, we love square footage possibly. Yeah.
They may be willing to do that, or they may not.
No idea, you're right.
Another discussion that has to be.
Of course, and that's what we say when we gotta have the right people at the table for all these decisions, that's what we mean, no assumptions.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Any committee reports, correct?
Remind that the Chrisless Center open houses, uh, at the end of this month, but I'll keep reminding people as it gets closer and closer, it's, it's July thirtieth. From five thirty to seven, and I will make more copies of this for the table so everybody knows about that open house, but it is coming up. And encourage the community and our, and my fellow colleagues here to go have that too.
They did a nice job of landscaping. Upgrading the landscape there last week.
They did a nice job of landscaping, upgrading the landscape there last week.
Wind County Historical Society will be meeting here on Saturday morning, NX at 8:30 this coming Saturday as well.
Historic Preservation Commission?
There's an upcoming roadside conference in Davenport, October 1st to 3rd, depending on who's interested.
Will somebody from secondary roads be attending this?
I guess that's a question.
I'll ask Mike.
Just a reminder, next week is no meeting.
No meeting on Monday.
Right now, we don't have anything on the agenda, so.
If something comes up, I'll ask her taking care of it. All right. We have someone from the Iowa Public Information Board online.
Make sure the volume is turned up so we can hear her. Her name is Kim.
Kim, are you unmuted?
She seemed to be unmuted.
You don't hear anything yet.
I forgot the volume turned up just for us to tell. Fatma, do you see a reason why we wouldn't be able to hear her in the annex?
Uh, she might be having some issues. It seemed to be like from her side. Can she write in the chat if she can hear us?
We don't hear anything yet, so.
Thank you. She's unmuted and I'm not sure why her voice is not coming through. I think the sound is from our side. Any chance? Fatma, can you unmute?
He's unmuted. He's, he's unmuted. She, she's having sound issue from her side.
She has no issues on her side. Where would she be looking over here?
We can't do anything from our side. She needs to go to her speakers and check.
Okay.
Welcome, Gary. He's on the city council.
What's your last entry?
Four, ma'am.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, ma'am.
Did Fatma say she was going to come down here and check or?
She said she's working at her woman's.
Oh, I think we need to, somebody needs to check our speakers here.
Fatma, can you come over at this end and work on it too?
Yes.
I did contact, I sent all the city clerks the information about this meeting so that if any other city council
They sent out to the city is that if any of the members watched the recording, you will fulfill. And we also thought about playing more possibly at the next kind of meeting.
Yeah, the speakers are working because we can hear Fatma through her microphone. No, we can't hear. Oh, that's true. Yeah, so I'm pretty sure it's the her microphone on our guest side. That's true because we can hear Fatma, so we're
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear Fatma, so something is
Kim, do you mind?
And our guest is unmuted.
Am I coming through?
Oh, no, we hear you.
You can hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Okay. Perfect. I'm also going to try turning on my camera here and see if you can see me as well.
You might want to up your volume a little bit so we can hear you.
Okay. Okay. See. We are upping the volume. One moment.
Thank you.
There is some times where we mute our end so it doesn't make feedback. So if she gets talking a lot, you may want to hit that mute mic button just so that we don't that she can kind of take over.
I don't, I don't think it's needed.
Okay. You let us know, Fatma, if you're getting feedback or something and we need to do that.
I'm going to just test the sound too while we're working on turning up the volume. Are you getting feedback right now?
Yeah, no, we can hear you just fine right now, I think.
Okay. And how is
Can you guys hear her okay back there?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent.
I'm going to close your door.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So first of all, I want to thank you so much for your patience as we worked through that. And also thank you for having us here today. We really appreciate it. As you know, we are here to talk a little bit about a complaint that was filed as part of the agreement based on that complaint. We are going to do some training today. Again, you've been a very cooperative governmental body. We really appreciate everything you've done. I also wanted to say thank you to your county attorney and your auditor, who've also been really instrumental in making sure the agreement is in place and that we're moving through the steps. So the complaint is primarily based on public records, but because our training encompasses public meetings and public records, I'm going to cover them both. If you have any questions at any point, let me know. I'm happy to stop and discuss with you. Um, so what I'm going to do right now is share my screen and hopefully this works. So any chance you can see my screen?
Yeah, no.
Not yet.
Okay.
Technology is wonderful until it's not.
Oh, you aren't kidding. Okay, let's try this. How about now?
Yeah. Yep, you're good now.
Okay, excellent. So once I flip this over to this version, I won't be able to see your faces. So just let me know if you have any questions or concerns, just shout it out and we will cover it. You should see right now an opening slide that says Iowa Sunshine Laws, Iowa Public Information Board. Is that coming through okay?
You were on, we see, we're on slide two right now. Yeah.
You're on slide two right now. Okay.
You're not in full screen for your presentation.
I want to do a slideshow.
Maybe you want to go back to slide one. Yeah. Select slide one.
Okay.
We see your cursor moving, so I it's connected.
Hmm.
If you click on slideshow, it might give us one slide at a time and then you advance to the slides.
Okay, where is, I can't find slideshow.
Right there.
Right here?
It says slideshow right under your cursor. Look to the right.
The right.
This is, and slideshow on mine.
Oh.
Yeah.
There, now we're on slide one.
Interesting. Okay, so my screen is showing something a little bit different. Okay, so you see Iowa Sunshine Laws, Iowa Public Information Board? Okay, excellent. Let's start there then. So as I mentioned, we're going to start with discussing open meetings. Do you see a slide that says open meetings 101 now?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so we'll start with open meetings, which is Iowa Code, Chapter 21. And we're going to talk about Iowa Code, Chapter 21 and 22, but we're starting with open meetings under Iowa Code, Chapter 21. One of the things that we always talk to about governmental bodies is if there's ever any ambiguity in terms of how the chapter is applied or how open meetings is applied, it's always resolved in the favor of openness. And that's really the history here of why we have these open records and open meetings laws is to make sure that the public can access things and really understand what that governmental body is doing. So if you sometimes think you see a ruling by the Iowa Public Information Board that seems a little bit more open in interpreting, it's because we do have that requirement that if there's a question, we resolve it in favor of openness. So what I want to start with is open meetings. And there are really four things that we're going to talk about in an open meeting. So we're going to ask first, are you a governmental body? Because we need to make sure open meetings actually apply to you. If you're not a governmental body, it's not going to apply. So the next question that we want to ask is, are you holding a meeting? And we're going to explore the definition of a meeting. It's actually a bit more nuanced than I think people sometimes recognize. Then we're going to look at, are you complying with all the legal requirements for a meeting? Everything from notice to minutes, et cetera. And then finally, we're going to take a close look at closed sessions. They're a bit, bit unique in terms of meetings, and so we'll look at some of the rules and requirements around closed session. Like I said, I have an hour with you today, maybe a little bit more. So I'm going to spend more meeting, or more time in our meeting on public records, but we'll cover this quickly. So the first question that we always ask is, are you a governmental body? And a governmental body can be a board, council, commission created by law or appointed by another governing body. So obviously you are a government body. But we do get questions, and I know I listened to a little bit of your meeting and you were talking about was either an advisory committee or a task force. We do get questions about those quite a bit. So one of the things that I just want to point out is that last bullet there is that advisory boards, commissions, committees, task forces created through 28e agreements or by statute or executive order of a state or subdivision to make recommendations on public policy are a governmental body and do need to meet transparency requirements in and of themselves. Just kind of wanted to point that out. A few others in the middle there. That third bullet is also really important. Advisory boards, advisory commissions, and task forces created by that governmental body. So definitely you are a governmental body. A lot of the task forces, advisory boards, things that you're creating are governmental bodies in and of themselves. We have this spreadsheet here, which I actually don't recommend reading unless you are really, really curious. And if you are, you can always call us and we'll talk you through it. But this does walk through how you can determine whether something is a governmental body. Like I said, it does get a bit nuanced sometimes, but from the Board of Supervisors position, it's really straightforward that you are one. One of the things that we recommend is a best practice, especially for some of those ad hoc committees, advisory boards, task forces, if they're not required to be open, is just go ahead and keep them open as a matter of good public policy. You can avoid a lot of questions and concerns from the public if you do keep them open. So we're going to talk about what's a governmental body. So if you are, the question is, are you holding a meeting? So a meeting is defined as a gathering in person or by electronic means, formal or informal, of a majority of the members of the governmental body where there's deliberation or action upon any matter within that governmental body's policymaking duties. So if we break that down, there are really four components to a meeting. It's a formal or informal gathering of members and it's a majority of those members where deliberation or action occurs and it's within the scope of that governmental body's policymaking duties. Now, we do get a lot of questions about, you know, we're gathering socially. Is that a meeting? Or having a work session? Is that a meeting? So one of the best practices that we recommend here is whatever you call that meeting, if there's deliberation or action by a majority of the members and it's within the scope of a policymaking duty, you need to make sure it's a meeting and then it needs to be open. But we do have, I guess, a little bit different guidance when it comes to social gatherings. We get a lot of questions about, okay, we are all part of a governmental body, but we're going to be together socially from time to time. It could be a state fair. It could be, you know, whatever local event is, is going on, a new business is launching in the community. And absolutely you can get together socially. You just need to make sure you're not discussing any business. It's pretty easy to slip into a meeting when you have a quorum and you're having a discussion and you sort of accidentally go into something that's within the scope of your, the scope of your policymaking duties. So just make sure you're not deliberating or discussing business in any way. But you absolutely can get together socially. And I think our board recognizes that that's part of the job. That's part of what you do is you need to be together in some of those public places that isn't necessarily a meeting. So just make sure that, yeah, keep that clean. And then that usually avoids questions. One of the things that is also considered a social or ministerial event is, you know, social, political, civic, civic events. Again, we just want to make sure that you avoid that deliberation. And we have some suggestions here that we think will help to avoid any deliberation. Because like I said, it is kind of a slippery slope. So we have some examples here. I think we should. I feel this could. I support, won't support this. My opinion on this matter is, let's take a poll. Those all sort of lend themselves to going right down that slope into deliberation. So we just say, make sure you're avoiding statements like that. Make sure you're not talking business. Another possibility to help avoid any appearance of impropriety is to go ahead and have that conversation in an open meeting. It may not be required, but we sometimes say, you know, maybe it's better, especially if it's something where the community lately has been, you know, questioning the social event. You want to avoid any appearance that you're not meeting the requirements, is to go ahead and just notice it and have a meeting. Or just notice it and say, hey, we're going to be doing this in open session. It puts the government, or it puts the public on notice that you're going to be gathering. They're aware you're going to be there. So providing that notice, let them know, will demonstrate some transparency there. A few other tips are, if you're going to be at the fair and you're all there together, you know, try not to cluster together and talk if you can, you know, sort of mingle, sit in different areas. And then just make sure that those conversations are social in nature. So again, these are just tips. You can take them, you can leave them, but we do find that we get less complaints when we have our governmental bodies observing some of these best practices. It's not in the law. It's not written anywhere in code, but it just helps to sort of alleviate getting any complaints. Another question that we get is about emails and texts. Can members email or text each other concerning governmental business? Now, we do get a lot of complaints about this and it's very, very fact specific. So we'll look carefully at each kind of complaint that involves emails and texts. But you can actually create a public meeting accidentally through email and text. So for example, if you're all on an email string together and you start to actually deliberate about something that falls within the scope of your policymaking duties, you can actually create a meeting that way. That creates a meeting. So just make sure that you're careful when you're emailing and texting. One of the things that we do when we're communicating with our board to make sure that we don't accidentally create a meeting is we use the BCC function. So we have all our members BCC'd. So that means that they just can't hit reply all and accidentally start a meeting. So BCC does help and we do recommend that as a tool. So we talked a little bit about then, are you governmental body? Are you actually holding a meeting? Let's say you are, you're having a meeting, you fully intend to have a meeting. What are the legal requirements that you need to meet for that meeting? I think one of the most important things is notice. And I'm sure you're all really aware of this, but just want to make sure that we do cover the notice because we do get questions about this. So there needs to be a notice of that meeting at least 24 hours in advance. It gives the date, time, place, and a tentative agenda. That's what's specifically required by the code. The notice of the meeting also has to be sent to any news organization that's requesting it. That's also outlined in the code. It also needs to be physically posted in a prominent place that's accessible to the public at the governmental office. We do get times where there's no governmental office, like local townships, for example, often don't have a government office. So if no office is available, we say it needs to be prominently placed where that meeting is going to be held. And we will sometimes have smaller governmental bodies meeting at the local coffee shop, for example. And so it's posted on the window of that coffee shop. Iowa Code has not necessarily kept up with notice practices. So the code does still say physically posted. I know a lot of governmental bodies will post on their websites. We highly encourage that, but there still also has to be that physical We highly encourage that, but there still also has to be that physical posting because unfortunately, that's still how the law reads. Something that we do get complaints about is if it is physically posted inside of a governmental building, we'll get complaints saying, you know, it was posted on a Friday for a Monday meeting and the government building shuts down for the weekend. So there's really no way that the public can see that notice. So one of the things we say is, put it on the inside of a glass door or a window somewhere where even if the building is closed, the public can see that posting. So they don't actually have to go into the building. You know, if they're working a shift or they're only available at night and the building's closed, they can just go see that posting on the outside of the building. We also get questions about agendas quite a bit. What actually needs to be included on the agenda? So a bare bones agenda with things like approval of old minutes, old business, new business, you know, something that simple would actually not be sufficient. We want to make sure that there's enough information in that agenda for the public to understand. So new business, what specifically is happening under new business? For example, you know, approval of maintenance on the highway or, you know, things like that. But just saying new business is not sufficient. We also want to make sure governmental bodies know that tentative agendas can be changed and they are changed. We just want to make sure those tentative agendas change within that 24 hour timeframe and get posted. Now, there are exceptions for that 24 hours if you need to change an agenda. And that is an emergency exception. But usually we only see this if it's a health, safety, or significant financial loss kind of issue. We've seen this, for example, when a tornado has gone through a community. They need to meet immediately those kinds of situations. It's usually a weather event or something catastrophic that's occurred. And then you can post that agenda with less than 24 hour notice. So I should pause. I can't, again, I can't see your faces. So any questions so far?
I have a question. The subcommittees or task force, are they subject to a majority? If there's a majority there, they have to have an open meeting, but less than that?
Yes. Yes. So, yes, if they have a majority, it needs to be an open meeting and they need to meet that same criteria that we talked about earlier. And one of the questions that we sometimes get is, if it's an advisory committee, does it need, is it meet a majority by looking back to the the board or commission that created it? Or is it's own majority? And so we actually just put out an advisory opinion not too long ago because we were getting a lot of questions about this. The task force itself, the members of that task force create the majority. In other words, that secondary body, the membership of that secondary body is what creates the majority, not the governmental body that created it. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, yep, you're very welcome. Yeah, we'll get a lot of questions about, you know, we have five members on our city council and, you know, we only have two members on our task force. So wouldn't we need, you know, three going back to that primary governmental body to create a majority? And the answer is no. If you have two on the task force, two is the majority. Great question. Any other questions?
Does that task force meeting or advisory meeting got to be publicized and that it's an open meeting or not?
Yes, it needs to meet all the requirements of any other public open meeting. So it does, it needs the notice, it needs the tentative agenda, it needs to be posted. So once you have a task force created by that governmental body, it needs to adhere to all the requirements for an open meeting. Absolutely.
We have another question. The room.
Yeah.
On the, your last bullet point where it says it must state specifically, even in a closed session, can you define that? Because it's going into closed session, you want to keep the topic pretty vague.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. We'll talk about that a little more in closed session. We have an entire section on closed session. So in a closed session, you do want an agenda item that is specific enough for the public to understand what's being discussed, but you do not have to give detail that specifically states the issue. And we'll talk about this, but what we suggest is that you cite to the code section that allows for the closed session. So for example, if you're having a closed session to discuss a real estate transaction, we suggest that you take that specific provision out of the Iowa code and use that for your agenda. And we'll talk about that in a in a bit more detail when we get to closed sessions. But yeah, it needs to be enough that they understand, you know, why you're going into closed session. But obviously, yes, you don't want to give details that expose exactly what you're trying to protect. Great question.
One more question on that advisory committee. They got to keep minutes and everything of that?
Absolutely, everything.
Public, no.
Yep, that's right. They have to keep minutes, they have to be available to the public, they have to have notice, they have to have an agenda. Yes, they have to, and really what that comes back to, and excuse me, I don't want to make anyone dizzy, but I'm just going to go back up here to. One, you have, and and what I'm assuming you're talking about is that third bullet here. You have an advisory board, commission, or task force that was created by a state or local government. So for example, you, as the Board of Supervisors, created a board, commission, or task force. Once that is created, it becomes a governmental body because this definition is taken right out of Iowa Code Section 21.2. It actually defines a governmental body as what you see in that bullet point. And once it becomes a governmental body, it has to comply with every piece of Iowa Code Chapter 21 and 22. So yes, everything that we cover today, that advisory board, commission, or task force would also be required to adhere to that. And that's assuming that the board or commission or task force is going to develop and make public policy recommendations.
That brings up a question. Then the public policy, let me use an example of, maybe we have an department that has some maintenance issues, or maybe some broken equipment that ought to be discussed to be replaced or repaired. That wouldn't fall under the public policy aspect, would it? Would that just be, how would that fit?
Well, so here's, here's what I would say is if they are looking at how to use public funding to enhance the function of that department by saying, you know, we need this equipment or we need to do this, that does actually sound like, you know, public policy. I mean, it is, it is.
I think what, yeah. The question is getting to like, we might have, the board is considering a replacement or repair of some equipment. So they send one or two members to go and talk with that department head or look at the equipment. That isn't necessarily in the meeting because no decision is going to, they're going to bring it back to the full board to then discuss what should happen. So when they're going to look at it, is that the meeting? I think that's the question.
Are they part of an actual advisory board, commission, or task force that was created by the board?
No, the Board of Supervisors has five members. So they, one of the department heads says, we'd like someone to come look at our, whatever, our piece of equipment. So they send one or two members to go look at it, to come back and report to the full board.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you that that is not a meeting. Mainly because you may, you have two members of that body, but they haven't been officially sanctioned to be a board, a commission, a task force, right? They're just two members going to collect information. So yes, I would say that actually is not a board, commission, or a task force. That's just two members collecting information for the full board.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of our practice is when we need to do something like that, we have one or two members to go and collect the information to report back to the full board what's going on.
Yes. Now, if you said these two members are our, we sanction these two members as our advisory commission on equipment, now you have a different situation. Yep. Good questions.
Going back to holding, I got one. Going back to holding an emergency meeting, I'm assuming the 24 hours is waived in those situations, certain situations.
It is. And yeah, as long as it's, it's health, safety. I mean, it would, it would need to be a fairly catastrophic event and I'm just going back to that now. But then, yes, that 24 hours is removed. Yep, health, safety, significant financial loss. That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And like I said, we have actually seen that used. I think the last time we saw it used was, it was a tornado that had impacted the community. So, yep, that's an absolute exemption. And you'll want to make sure that you would document why that emergency was required.
Yeah, we've used that one to, if the board needs to get together to declare an emergency disaster, they might do that. And we acknowledge that in the minutes, the why it was done without notice.
Yes, that's a perfectly good reason to use that exemption, absolutely. And thank you for monitor noting that in the minutes. That also makes our job a little bit easier. If we do get a complaint, we can note that that was, you know, there, there was a reason given. It was in the minutes, it was publicly available. So that's a very good practice. So thank you. So continue to just stop me if you have questions. I just can't see your, you know, your faces or hands. So just jump right in there, let me know if you have questions. I'm happy to take them at any point. So again, this is assuming that you have a governmental body that's holding a meeting. In addition to the notice and the agenda, minutes are also required. So they need to make sure that they take and document any official actions of the governmental body during the meeting. At a minimum, those minutes need to have the dates, time, and place of the meeting, the members who are present, and the action taken at that meeting. All votes have to be recorded. But if it's a unanimous vote, it can be noted as unanimous as long as all those present vote. So I know we get questions about, you know, if it's a unanimous vote, everybody present votes, do I still need to say, you know, a roll call for each member? If it's unanimous, you can note in the minutes that it's unanimous. Minutes are public record as soon as they're complete. They have to be published, possibly in the appropriate newspaper. It just kind of depends on what criteria you have to meet. They can also be made available online. We do have a law that went into place. Let's see, it was the last, not this most recent ending legislative session, but the one before where there's now electronic access to meetings that required, that are required. I can see, obviously, that you have achieved making sure there's access to meetings electronically. I'm electronically accessing your meeting, I could see others were. One of the things we just want to make sure we cover is that you are required to do so. Sounds like, I can see you're doing a great job with this. Even if it's not going to be utilized, there still needs to be that electronic meeting option available. So just want to make sure that you're aware of that, but obviously you're doing a great job with that. Public participation, want to discuss this because we do go to meetings and we do sometimes see where there's public participation in ways that's maybe actually harming the ability of the board to get things done. So it's great to have a public comment on your agenda, but there's really nothing in Iowa code that says you're required to allow the public to participate. Now, we highly, highly encourage public participation, but it's not required. Any public comments that are made during that meeting don't have to be in the minutes. For example, when I do our minutes for our board, I will say, you know, Bob Jones spoke to the board or addressed the board, but I don't put all the detail of maybe what Bob Jones said. Minutes really only need to make sure they, they track the actions taken, you know, by the board members. You don't have to put all the detail of the public comments. So we say this because there are times, especially when controversial issues come before boards or we see public participation becoming something that actually impacts the board getting things done. So we say, let's, you have the right under Iowa Code Chapter 21.7 to have reasonable rules for conducting your meetings. So you can limit public comment to three minutes, you know, per person at the beginning. Or if you have a specific issue, you want to open up to public participation. You can say, you know, we're now going to open it up to the public and you'll have five minutes each to address the board. You can have those rules to make sure you can govern effectively. But you just make, make sure it's uniformly enforced. So if everybody gets five minutes, everybody gets five minutes, regardless of whether, you know, somebody has something that you feel is worthwhile or not. You can't really make that sort of decision, just make sure it's uniformly enforced.
I have a question on that. This is a county sheriff. I've had a couple of inquiries through a couple of different city councils throughout our county and various other places about if, whether it's an actual council member, board member, or whether it's a member of the public that is not following the rules of the meeting, wanting to know if we can come in and assist them with that. What are our constitutional boundaries on that to make sure that we are not infringing on anybody's constitutional right, their freedom of speech? It obviously, those situations put us in a very precarious spot as far as how we do or don't handle those situations.
Yeah, you know, I think that's probably a good conversation to, for us to have online, offline. I mean, that one's a little bit complicated. But what I will say is, if you have set those clear parameters and you have somebody who is not following those parameters, they continue to interfere, they continue to interrupt, and it gets to the point that, you know, you can't hold the meeting anymore, they can be removed. But I would say, that's a last resort. You want to make sure that if they are, if, even if they're, they're in their five minutes, even if they're in their five minutes and they're just, you know, yelling or saying things that don't make a lot of sense, give them that five minutes for their, for their public comment. If, if after that five minutes ends and it's being uniformly enforced, they're still disrupting the board to the point that the board cannot, you know, cannot function, then I think that it is okay to remove that person. But let's, let me give you a call and we can maybe talk about some of the broader questions that you have there on constitutionality. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that would be great. That is something that's came up a few times. And my directive has always been exactly which you have stated that we're going to, or, you know, we're, it's, it's a delicate situation with the First Amendment.
Yeah, absolutely. You do want to make sure that regardless of what they're saying, they have that five minutes. So, or whatever that rule is. But yeah, I will call you and we can maybe talk about that in more detail. Great question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. If we can jump back to electronic meetings are required. When we're out in a park and we're touring the park or the facilities, we're no longer at a place where electronic access is available. How are we to handle that?
Oh, that is a great question. I don't think we've had that question before. Yeah. Let me think about that one. I do know that does happen quite often. You're touring another facility, you're touring a cemetery, you're touring, like you said, a park. And it becomes very difficult to engage electronically. That is an excellent question. I think you may have stopped me there. I think there needs to be some kind of exception for, you know, to allow you to do your work, but we haven't had that one. So let me talk a little bit about that amongst all our staff and I will follow up with you on that one.
When I took the training at the Iowa State Association of Counties for open meetings, that was addressed and they said that as long as you include that on your agenda and it's possible for the public or those interested to join you at that park or for that tour, it's on the agenda and they can go.
Yeah, yeah. That makes sense. It's just that they would not be able to join electronically. They would just be able to join in person. I think that's probably the correct answer. And they do a great job, by the way. So I wouldn't want to question what, what they advise. That does sound, that does seem like it makes sense. I just want to go back and look at that one more time and make sure there's anything we're missing there. Because it's a great question. Because, yeah, absolutely, you need to have it on the agenda. Absolutely, you need to be able to attend in person if possible. I don't think this is one of those situations where there's any probably feasible way to provide electronic access. So I think that's right. But I'll take a closer look at that and I'll follow up with you. Great question. Any other questions? Okay. Let's see. One other thing on public rights, we just talked about this. So your question was great. All members of the public do have the right to attend open meetings. We talked about just a moment ago, making sure though, that there are, there are some reasonable rules for attending and you can enforce those, but absolutely, everybody does have the right to attend an open meeting. And it needs to be held at a place that's reasonably accessible to the And it needs to be held at a place that's reasonably accessible to the public and at a time reasonably convenient for the public unless there's a good cause. Um, and you can grant special access to the meeting for individuals with disabilities. But for example, you don't want to have, um, your meeting at a locked building at midnight. I mean, obviously that, that's an end run around the requirement that the meeting be transparent. So we just say, make sure it's a place reasonably accessible and reasonably convenient timing. Okay, so then we, we're going to move into closed session unless there are any other questions about open session. Okay. And, and, and this, you can always ask questions about open session if, if it comes up. But I do know closed session is very unique. We get a lot of questions and concerns about closed sessions. I just want to spend a few minutes on closed. Um, so first of all, you can only hold a closed session what, by having a vote in open session of two thirds of the members of the body. So in other words, you can't just say, okay, closed session on the agenda, going in closed session. You have to hold that vote in open session to go into closed session. Um, and again, two thirds of the members of the body, um, or all members present need to agree to go into that closed session. It needs to be recorded in your minutes, the vote on that. Um, but there definitely needs to be a vote in open session before you go closed. And I think the question came up earlier about how specific does the agenda have to be? So you need to cite one of the reasons under Iowa code section twenty one point five to go into closed session. And this is what we recommend, including in your agenda, is the specific citation to Iowa code section twenty one point five. So for example, um, your agenda may say, uh, tentative closed session to review or discuss a record which is required or authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential or as a condition to retain federal funding. That's what we would recommend your agenda say is to follow the outline in twenty one point five, whatever that rationale is for going into closed session. Um, so this is the laundry list of reasons why you can go into closed session under twenty one point five. I'm not going to cover them all, but I'm going to highlight a few that we get questions about. So one of them that we get questions about is to discuss strategy with counsel on matters that are currently or may imminently be in litigation. So if you're going to use that exception, counsel needs to be identified and present in some capacity for the discussion. So seems kind of obvious. You're discussing strategy with counsel. Make sure your counsel's there. If your counsel's not there, we're definitely going to question that closed session. So make sure your counsel's there.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Could, and Mike, you go back just a second, but did you just say that the public doesn't have a right to record or to video at, in open meeting?
Oh, I think you're talking about, okay, so yes, so the public does not have a right to participate in this discussion, but they can use cameras or recording devices at the opening. They can.
Yeah, they can.
They can.
Well, we've had a lot of calls by the citizens, especially in our area. They thought maybe recording the meetings if they couldn't be there. So you're saying that that's not a good idea?
The public, if they can't be there, they can use cameras or recording devices to, to. Yes. You're very welcome. Yes, that's absolutely allowed. As a matter of fact, I mean, it's no different than the media, right? If the media's there, media's recording with cameras or devices, it's an open meeting. It's open to the public. So they absolutely can record it and that is allowed. Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Um, okay, so again, this is just the laundry list of issues that can allow you to go into closed session. Um, I'm going to pause on this one for a second because there's been a lot of discussion within the court system on this one. So one of the closed session, um, confidentiality exemptions is to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session. So we get this all the time where the governmental body is doing a review or a firing of someone that works within that governmental body. So you need to document in your minutes when you go into closed session that it's necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to the individual's reputation and that the individual who's being reviewed, discharged, et cetera, has requested a closed session. There has been active and there is active litigation on this issue, uh, Tighe v. Loffler. You can see here a citation to that case. Um, and there, there's just a lot going on. I would say keep a close eye on what happens with this case under further review because it really could impact how closed sessions are used to evaluate the professional competency of an individual. Right now, our recommendation is make sure you note that you're going into closed session to prevent that injury and any detail you can include there and then that the individual has requested that closed session. Um, so again, here's just some more, uh, closed session.
The advice of our county attorney is that we have them request the closed session in writing so that we can include that with our.
That's a great suggestion. You have a great county attorney. Um, absolutely. That's, that's great. Put it in writing, attach it. Absolutely. It's a great idea. Um, I also just want to mention that to discuss the purchase or sale of real estate. I see a lot of government bodies using this exception. One thing I just want to point out is that the minutes and audio recording of the closed session for this exemption have to be made available when the transaction is dropped or completed. So that's just a little bit different than some of the other exemptions that don't have that requirement. Um, so just want to make sure you're aware of that. Um, nothing in Iowa code, chapter twenty one requires a governmental body to hold a closed session. So just want to make sure that you know you have all those exemptions available. It doesn't mean you have to use them. Um, and then of course, there are other exemptions beyond chapter twenty one that could allow for a closed meeting, but we're only covering those in chapter twenty one today. Now, let's say we're in closed session, you've taken all the steps that you need to take. You're in the closed session. Make sure that you don't discuss anything else except what is set for that topic for the closed session. Um, you may have heard about, there was a case involving the Doitt School Board where they went into closed session. There was a lawsuit. They had to release the closed session transcript and they were talking about all kinds of things. Can't do that. Um, make sure it's only the issue that's being discussed for closed session. You also, this is the only time when we're going to advise you, you need to take detailed minutes. So we talked about making broader minutes. You don't have to have detailed minutes during an open session. Closed session, you do need detailed minutes. You need to have a recording of it as well. And you need to retain these records for at least one year. They are not public record, but you need to retain them at least one year. Um, members cannot be excluded from the closed session unless a conflict exists. And let's say you have a member that wasn't there for the, for the closed session that day for one reason or another. Um, they can get access to a closed session recording in minutes if they were absent and otherwise would have access. And then if you're going to take any action based on that closed session, you have to come back to open session and take that final action in open session. So some really specific procedures there for closed session that we want to make sure you're aware of. Um, any questions about that? Okay, sounds like you have a good, oh, go ahead.
The, uh, one year, that is a minimum record retention or is that a, are they open after one year?
No, they're not open after one year. It's just a minimum retention requirement. Um, the only one that, that would become a public record is a, again, that real estate transaction once it's dropped or concluded, but otherwise they do not become public record. That's just a minimum retention requirement. So in other words, if you, if you did not keep them at least a year, someone files a lawsuit, the court orders you to release those, it hasn't been a year, then you did not meet the requirements of Iowa code of maintaining them for at least one year. You, you can keep them longer if you want to, but you absolutely have to keep them for at least one year. And they do not become public record after that year. Like I said, the only one that will become public record is that sale of real estate. Um, so then there's also exempt, uh, sessions related to employment conditions. So you can meet to discuss strategy related to employment condition, um, who are not covered. This is one of those collective bargaining exemptions. They're not covered by a collective bargaining agreement under chapter twenty. Um, and this is just a reference to what employment conditions means. We do not get a lot of questions about this because it's specific to collective bargaining. Um, but just kind of wanted to point this out too. And it may not even be something that impacts you, but, um, wanted you to see that slide. Um, so that's public meetings. I'm going to pause here, see if there are any questions and then we'll move into records. Okay, so public records is a completely different chapter. It's Iowa code, chapter twenty two. And this chapter, as opposed to making sure your meetings are open, this one relates to the records that you, uh, record, maintain uh, during your business. So, and again, this is chapter twenty two. We just covered chapter twenty one. So again, kind of our roadmap here to public records, these are the main questions you want to look at is, has a request been made for a public record? We'll talk about what that definition is. Who can obtain them? How does a governmental body comply with requirements for producing public records? Any exemptions, which there are a lot, for production of public records? And what happens if a governmental body does not comply with transparency requirements? So this is what we're going to do is we're going to dive into each of these questions. And again, just stop me if you have any concerns, questions, et cetera. So we'll start with what is a public record. Um, public records are a little more complicated. So it's a, um, a document, a tape or any other kind of information stored or preserved in any medium of or belonging to a governmental body. And that can include electronic communications like emails, websites or texts and records relating to the investment of public funds. Now, one of the things I just want to point out here is it's stored or preserved in a medium belonging to a governmental body. So let's say two years down the road, um, somebody says, hey, I want a document from this state. It's no longer on, in the governmental body's possession. It hasn't been stored or preserved. Then it's not a public record at that point. We'll dive into that, but I would say make sure you look closely at this definition of a public record. Um, to make sure when you get a request that it is truly a public record because there are a lot of questions that come up on even just the basic definition. One of the stickiest issues that we get when it comes to public records is whether something's public or whether something's private. So we get this a lot when it comes to, um, you know, private email addresses or, or phones, telephones, you have text messages, right? And whether those are public or private. It doesn't matter at all, um, what the, it, what matters is where, what that information relates to. It doesn't matter at all where it's stored. It matters what it's, what it relates to. So that record could be anywhere, but if it's you and you're talking about your governmental business, it becomes a public record. So emails from a private email address related to public business can be public records. And a private communication on a public email is not a public record. So it's the content that we focus on. Um, we always say the best practice is to keep your public and private communications separate. Um, there are several court cases that address this. So just want to make sure that, that we point out, if, if at all possible, make sure you keep those separate. Because if, we don't care where it lives, as long as it's, you know, related to you conducting your business as a public official, it's going to be public record. Um, so one of the things that, that we would recommend, and I think we may have recommended this in your case too, is that you have a policy governing the use of private devices for governmental business. So for example, if you're using your phone to text about governmental business, that there be a policy in place that says, uh, if there is a public record request, and this is just an example, different governmental bodies do this different ways. But that the lawful custodian can look through your phone, identify any of those records and download them within a specific period of time. And that you have to retain those for a specific period of time. Just some kind of policy so that everybody's clear on what happens if you're communicating on your private device related to government business. Um, best practices should also include discussion of any of those kinds of requests with your legal counsel if there's a question regarding disclosure. Um, I think I've already, you know, given kudos to your county attorney, but would continue to work with your county attorney on any kinds of questions related to public records and where that line is between public and private. We get a lot of complaints on that. Um, so want to pause there and see if there are any questions on public and private. Okay, so let's talk about who can obtain public records, who has the right to examine them? Pretty much anyone. Um, anyone can examine, photograph or copy a public record without charge while it's in the physical possession of that governmental body. We will sometimes get questions about, well, this, this was a reporter from another state. Doesn't matter. It's a public record. Um, you also can't, and this is under Iowa code twenty two point six. You can't prevent the examination of a record by contracting with a non-governmental entity to store that record. So let's say that you, uh, obtain the services of a storage company and they're storing your electronic records. And someone says, I want to see that record. You can't hide behind that, that agreement with the private entity and say, well, they have everything. It's not in our possession anymore. If you, if you are controlling, um, that entity that is holding or storing those records for you, you have possession of them. So we just want to make sure there isn't an end run around the requirement in terms of possession that you just contract with someone to hold those records for you. That won't work. Um, and then the other thing we want to make sure that we note is if it's treated like a pub, public document for one person, it's for everyone. So we've had cases where, um, a, a limited disclosure has occurred to a member of the public. And they said, well, it's just a limited disclosure. That was kind of a unique situation. No, it was released as a public record to one person. It's now available to everybody. Uh, another question is can a request be made, um, by an anonymous person? We get that a lot. So person isn't defined in chapter twenty two, but there is other code sections that do define person and it can be an individual, a corporation, a limited liability company, uh, an agency, a trust, estate, et cetera. So it can be an anonymous person. It can be a business, you know, whatever. It can be just about anybody. Um, you can't force them to show an ID. You can't force them to fill out a form. Um, so it, it's, it's pretty broad in terms of who can request a public record. So you know you have a public record, someone's requested it. How do you make sure that you comply with the requirements for producing public records? First of all, we say designate a lawful custodian. That's required by Iowa code section twenty two point one. You have to have someone who is going to be that lawful custodian. He's going to field those requests and help to work through responding. So lawful custodian is the governmental body currently in physical possession of the public record, but also it's somebody who's specifically designated by that government body to comply with the public records and public records requirements. Um, it doesn't mean an automatic data processing unit. If the data processing unit holds the records solely as an agent of another public body. Now, that's the language that comes from the code. Our translation here is that there are agencies that simply store records for other agencies. So for example, in the state of Iowa, we have the Department of Management. They hold a lot of records for other agencies. Um, but again, this kind of goes back to what I was saying earlier about a contracted entity that's storing records. The responsibility to produce the documents is still with the agency who's the lawful custodian and not the agency simply providing a storage mechanism. So I just wanted to point that out too. So what happens when you get this request? So chapter twenty two is completely silent. Is the, it's to the exact time that's required to respond to a records request. And you'll hear a lot, and you probably hear this a lot, hey, you have twenty days to respond. That's not true. Um, there's no specific timeframe, but there are requirements that you have to respond. So no absolute twenty day deadline, but you need to respond. Um, and you need to do that promptly. Uh, if it's a routine request, try to get it out immediately or as soon as possible. You can have a good faith delay to turn, to determine whether the record is a public record, whether it's actually confidential. And that's usually about ten, twenty days. Uh, we say don't exceed twenty days to determine whether it's confidential or if it's actually a public record. We also want to make sure that you respond to that request, uh, right away. And there are several Supreme Court decisions that have come out in the last couple of years that talk a little bit more about what constitutes a reasonable or unreasonable delay, what might be justified. And we're not going to cover all those today. And I know you have a great counsel who can walk you through this, but some of those recent cases are Bellin versus Reynolds and Kirkwood Institute versus Sand. One involved the governor's office, one involved the auditor's office. And they really outline, uh, how you ensure that you have a reasonable delay if you're going to delay. Now you can charge, this is the question we get a lot, can you charge a fee? Now you can charge, this is the question we get a lot, can you charge a fee for the services of the lawful custodian to retrieve and copy public records? Absolutely you can, a hundred percent yes, but it has to be based on the actual costs directly attributable to the examination or copies of the records. So um, it needs to be, it needs to be, this is how much the paper was per page. It can't be things like, or this is how much time this person spent and this is their hourly wage. And you have to break that down precisely how much time was spent, what their wages. But it can't include things like administrative office expenses, like maintenance of the printer or insurance, depreciation, things like that. So it needs to be just the actual cost for producing those records. You can, and you should, say this is the amount it's going to cost, this is what we estimate it will cost. And we will start producing those records once we get prepayment of that fee. You can do that. You absolutely can. Um, but you have to tell them what those estimated expenses will be. And then you have to kind of circle back around when you're all done producing and say, this is what it actually was and either reimburse for the actual amount. Um, or they may have to pay a little bit more depending on how that works out, but you need to make sure it's actual costs. Any questions on that so far? Okay. Um, now, we talked about, a lot about costs, but we do want to make sure that if there's a way you can provide that document free of charge, that you do all that you can. Uh, we say, you know, if it's not going to take us very long here, if it's going to take us an hour, we just produce it free of charge. Uh, if it's something that's going to take us, you know, a couple of days, that's when we start looking at an estimate of expenses. Another question that we get a lot are, can we charge for our attorney reviewing public records to determine whether they should be confidential? And yes, attorneys representing governmental bodies can charge for the time they spend reviewing. But just a few limitations here, they should only be utilized for adaction or review of legally protected confidential information. And they need to make sure that they're charged only for the time the attorney actually spends redacting or reviewing that confidential information. And we have a few advisory opinions that we've cited to down here at the bottom that you can look at if you have more questions about that. Um, but again, your attorney is also a great resource. Um, is redaction required? So you can't say, uh, we have this record, if we redacted it, we would have to redact it to make sure that we can produce it without releasing confidentiality. So we're just going to hold that record. You can't do that. If there's a way you can redact portions of it and produce it, you need to do that. And again, redaction is a fee that you can charge for. So we talked about those public records. There are a laundry list of confidentiality exemptions that say you don't have to produce those records, a laundry list. We are not going to cover them because they're over seventy-five and they continue to grow. Did someone have a question? Okay. Um, so we're not going to cover all of them, but know they're here in this slide. Um, it includes medical records, work product of an attorney, um, peace officers investigative reports, crisis intervention reports, uh, appraisal information, information that can impact federal funding. So there are a ton. And what I'm going to do is just kind of pick out a few that I think we hear about most often or that questions arise about most often. Um, the first one is confidential personnel records, which is twenty-two point seven eleven. So personal information in confidential personnel records of governmental bodies, so employees of governmental bodies relating to identified or identifiable individuals who are officials, officers, or employees of that governmental body um, are confidential with the exception of several things here. So things that are public in that, in that personnel record are their name, their compensation, employment dates, positions held, educational background, or previous uh, employment, and whether the individual resigned in lieu of termination. Um, so those things are public in a personnel record. There's also this exception under twenty-two point seven eighteen, which is communication from persons outside of government. And this typically comes up in law enforcement more often. Uh, but basically this is someone who's communicating from outside government with a person inside government not required to do so. And if that was released, it would cool the public from reporting that kind of information. So you can see that's probably something used more in law enforcement. I just wanted to point that out. This is another issue I just want to raise, um, because that same person's outside government has recently been applied in uh, in the issue where you have job applicants applying for governmental jobs from outside of government. Those are confidential, but now the courts have interpreted that person's outside government as saying if the candidate is internal and applying for a job, that internal application is, is not going to be exempt. So again, this is another one of those issues that we're going to have to see how this pans out. But at this point, internal candidates may not be entitled to that same protect, protection as an external candidate. So again, wanted to make you aware of that.
Hey Kim, uh, if we can uh, go back one slide. I assume when you're talking about uh, things that would basically dissuade people from calling law enforcement, that, that would be the majority of our body cam footage. That is specific to our interactions with the public. If we would get requests such for different body cam footage, is that in general been held as confidential or where is that at based on that slide and what you stated?
Yeah, no, so body cam footage is typically considered part of the peace officer investigative report. Now there could be times when body cam footage is picking up a specific communication. Like if someone runs up to you and says, you know, I want to report right now that my neighbor just sold drugs to a ten-year-old, please go now. That looks more like a twenty-two point seven eighteen. But body cam footage in general is usually placed as part of a peace officer investigative report, which is twenty-two point seven five. So a different exemption. So I think it's going to depend on what's on that body cam footage. Cause I've even looked at body cam footage and ruled it's exempt for, as a medical record too. Like if the officer is in the ambulance with someone, they're following them into the hospital, the individual's getting treatment and that body cams on. That could also be a medical exemption. So I really think you have to look closely at the nature of that body cam footage and what exemption it might fall into. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. A lot of our body cam footage is going to show footage of inside people's personal homes or curtilage of their homes. And also in some circumstances, it's going to show personal images um, that uh, I, I would, I would think for obvious reasons would, would not be appropriate to share in public.
Yeah, yeah, you kind of, we always say that if it's part, you know, it's generally part of the peace officer investigative report, which has its own set of exemption. You know, it's, it's its own exemption. Um, but then to your point, you have to look closely at it too and see, you know, what is it disclosing? And are there other exemptions that could protect it? And it's, it's very, very fact-specific. Um, so yeah, it could be this, it could be twenty-two point seven five, it could be a medical record. It could, you know, there's just a whole host of things that could fall into.
Sounds like most of the time it's exempt. It just depends on which exemption you're assigning it.
That's correct. And if, here's the other thing too, if it's an exemption under twenty-two point seven five, which is a peace officer investigative report, um, the court has ruled that if you're using that exemption, it's not just a blanket exemption, you have to apply a balancing test to it um, to determine whether the public and private interests, one of those sort of wins out over the other. Um, so a great example of that is there's body cam footage that has been um, taken in officer-involved shootings. And there are times when the court will say there's a public interest in releasing that body cam footage. So there is a balancing test that applies.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, clear as mud, right? Um, there are all kinds of, all kinds of exemptions and each one has its own nuances. So I would say if there's ever a question about it, you know, talk to your counsel, talk to us, we're happy to walk through some of the exemptions that might apply to.
Uh, while I have you and I might have to sign off here shortly, um, could you uh, send a uh, copy of your presentation to Ben for him to disseminate out?
I have it then, I, I can send it to you.
Okay, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Ben. Yes.
And the audio recording too, preferably Ben, I'd like to share this with my staff.
It's available, it'll be available under, to the public under watch meetings on our website, but audio and videos.
Okay, thank you.
Um, also want to talk about, and a great question by the way, and any others, just let me know. Draft records. So we get a lot of questions about draft records. You can hold something uh, under a draft exemption if it's tentative, preliminary, speculative research material prior to its completion. So uh, I think a lot of people think if it's draft, it's always draft, but once you have everything completed, that draft exemption um, can become moot. So just kind of wanted to point that out. This is an advisory opinion that we have on draft documents twenty-three AO zero 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 eight on our website, and it kind of walks you through the history of draft documents and how to determine if it's a draft. This is a little bit uh, what, what we were just talking about. So police officer investigative files under twenty-two point seven five aren't guaranteed confidentiality. Rather, there is a balancing test that has to be applied. Um, that comes from Mitchell v. City of Cedar Rapids. We have so many cases where we are interpreting a balancing test as it relates to peace officer investigations. Um, it is not easy. It's balancing test. It should be done though, whenever there is a request for a peace officer investigative file. Um, so, and you can see here at the bottom, this is just one of the examples, twenty-three AO zero 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 three, where we've applied that, the courts applied that. There's a lot of precedent out there now for how to apply the balancing test. It's not perfect. It, it is a balancing test. So you're looking at the public interest, private interest, and which one of those sort of weighs out in terms of disclosure. So um, again, give us a call if you have any questions, outreach to counsel if you have peace officer investigative files and you're not sure what you should do with those. Um, settlement records are also considered confidential. You have to make sure though, that a summary after dispute is resolved, is completed and indicates the parties involved, the nature of the dispute and the terms of settlement. Uh, we usually say if you have questions about your settlement records, definitely work with your counsel on that one. Um, finally, Iowa public records law does allow you to release confidential information if it's ordered by a court, if the lawful custodian deems it should be released, or if it's released by another person duly authorized to release such information. And like we talked about before, once it's a public record, it's a public record. Um, so you can't put the cap back in the bag. So if a court orders it as a public record and it's released, it is now public for everybody. I do want to mention too, that there are some penalties and sanctions for failure to comply with transparency requirements, whether that's open meetings or open records. And this just changed uh, during the last legislative session and the, the penalties were increased. Um, so you can get um, damages between one hundred and two thousand five hundred. Um, and those were just increased to one thousand to twelve thousand five hundred. So big jump there during the uh, legislative session. So um, wanted to make sure that you're just aware of that. And then um, that's really what we have today. You can contact us with any questions or concerns. This is our website. Um, our email address, our phone number, and we are happy to work with governmental bodies to talk through any issues they're having. We can do advisory opinions. Uh, if you have a particularly tricky issue and you're not sure what to do about it. So um, we're here to help. And with that, I'll just pause and see if there are any other questions.
I don't have a question, but just as another statement or a point to make, is that when we're in, around this table, any information we have on the table face up basically is public record.
That's correct. Yes. That's correct. You're in a public forum, you're discussing issues within your jurisdiction and your roles. Um, and that's, it's, it's open, it's open meeting. So yes. Any other questions? Okay, well, I, I just want to make sure that you know how much we appreciate um, all that you have done to get us to this point today. Appreciate your time and attention. Um, Ben does have the PowerPoint and we're happy to take any other questions or concerns you may have in the future. Just call us and um, again, thank you so much.
Do you want to have anything else? Today's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. All right, thanks, Jerry. Either pretend or watch this word.
Here. Um, Ben will have it.
Well, I, I emailed it to everybody just.
Let's go say I didn't get it, what if it's just.
It was about a half hour before the meeting. I was going to print a copy, other than it was like eighty pages, so I didn't know.
It's worth it.
What? Yeah, it was a lot of pages. I don't remember exactly. There was a lot of pages. I hit print and I saw, oh, that's a lot of piece of paper maybe on this.
You could check one out.
Yeah, I mean, I could. I, I might even have, have the, I teed it posted on.
Thank you, thank you.
Mainly also I should.
There's only one supervisor in the room now.